We'll open the Blackstone Mobile Regional School District School Committee meeting for Thursday, January 12th. We could stand for the lunch.
(inaudible)
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 We're going to have a moment of silence for our retired teacher, Mrs. Mahoney, who recently passed away. Introduction of members.
Brittany Dwyer, student representative.
Joey Watson, Blackstone.
Steve Trigalli, Millville.
Sarah Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Georgette Jarrett, Blackstone.
Jack Keefe, student representative.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. And report of student representatives.
So it's been a quiet past couple of weeks since we've been coming back in the new year. Next week starts off midterms on Wednesday, the 18th, and it ends Monday, the 23rd. We have two exams per day, so we start with A and B, and then we end on one exam on that Monday with the G grade exam. We are allowed to leave after our exams. They prefer us to stay to study with their teachers, et cetera, but we are allowed to leave if we have a parent note. Exemptions are only allowed for semester classes, so if you have, I believe, an 85 or above in a semester class, you are allowed to be exempt. So that's what's going on for midterms.
Tomorrow is Guidance's Field Trip to New England Tech. It's a great opportunity, but all the spaces have been filled up, which is great as well. So we're going to have a bunch of students going out to New England Tech and touring their campus and such.
So far with sports, we've started in a very successful spot, especially for basketball. So far, boys JV is three to three, girls JV is three to one, boys varsity is four to three, and girls varsity is four to one. It's been very successful, and we still have students cheering on their team at the stampede, which is very exciting.
And on the track side of things, the boys started so far with an 0-1, and the girls are 0-2, but again, it's only just the start of the track season, so we're hoping for some improvement there. That's about all we have for you this week. Been very slow.
Okay. Any questions for our student reps?
Have the countdown started yet?
No, but I'm going to get on to that, actually.
I refuse to allow it to start until it's less than 50 days.
Oh.
I can't be seeing it every day. It'll take too long.
That's all you focus on, then.
All right. Good luck on your midterms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We've actually moved the presentation to January 26th. That was supposed to be removed. So we'll go to our first public forum. And I think we'll keep moving. To consent to Agenda A, which is warrants, field trips, minutes of meeting for December 15th, which I was not here, so I will abstain from.
I will too.
So we shift separate minutes, then?
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion for warrants and field trips.
So moved.
Motion made by Jane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then minutes for the meeting of December 15th. Abstaining is myself, Georgette, and Bill. Anyone else? I'm looking for a motion for -- to approve the minutes for December 15th.
So moved.
Motion made by Wendy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any unanimous for those that voted? And school committee, we have a subcommittee update. If anyone has one, that's fine. There is one.
As far as policies, I am meeting again on January 20th to do the next set.
What time?
11:00 AM.
How's the progress with the first set?
First two are in agreement, so we'll keep moving on.
Any other updates for subcommittees?
Yeah, I'll present if you want. Everyone got the deregionalized slides that I sent out back in November and the sources that I got it from? So I'm just going to kind of go through the slides, and I'm not for or against this. It's not a pleasant topic, but I think it's a topic that we're obligated to have. So I'll just go through the slides, and if people have questions, we can throw them out there. So deregionalizing the district, you know, how do we get to this point? You know, we try to have one school district vision, and it seems to turn into quicksand six to eight months of the year during budget season. So the last year's prolonged process into the summer months really created some significant ripple effects fiscally for the district. Ongoing conflict between both towns regarding funding and vision, and ongoing concerns regarding the fiscal health of the town of Millville is some of the reasons why we would look at this. Current choices in terms of the district, you know, it's one of the things that we do every year. We try to figure out how we can consistently increase the funding plan to improve the long-term fiscal stability of the district. It's something that I think we've struggled the last, at least the last four years that I've been here, and probably the last four years before that. You know, and how do we address facility needs? How do we address 21st century needs? How do we become future-ready, increase capacity to meet needs of all students and the changing needs? How, as a school committee, can we continue to be good partners to both towns? Sometimes that can be a struggle. And how do we reconcile the differences in the vision between both towns? So there's -- I just threw out three options. One is to do nothing, keep it the way it is, no economic changes, no contractual changes, continued town division during budget process each year. One thing, another option is to continue to look at the regional agreement. We've looked at that. It's a previous two-year study already done where Blackstone passed, Millville denied, and there's a current group looking at that again. And the third option that we're kind of throwing out tonight, really not option, but you know, something that you want to explore, is to deregionalize. Whether it's full, Millville has K through 12, and Blackstone has K through 12, or partial, and there's many variations of the partial. The process to deregionalize is a simple one in terms of, one of the two towns has to place an article on a warrant at a town meeting regarding moving forward with a desire to move away from the regional school district. At that point, exploratory committee gets formed to review and provide a complete picture. What I gave you is just a kind of a surface-level, you know, picture, but a complete picture of the logistics and details that would look like to provide a summary of the costs, benefits, potential pitfalls for each town, and there are pitfalls for each town. And then to move towards having a completed plan submitted to the Department of Ed, an administrative plan, and a budget plan for the newly-formed districts. I threw out numbers in the slides. You know, they were based on the 2015, 2016 numbers, basically the 70-30, you know, cut. The challenges with remaining regionalized are the, you know, what I've already talked about, the lack of being able to make effective change moving forward. You know, there's disconnect between towns, at least during budget season, and the vision that we have. There's the annual anxiety that I know we all have going through an experience of multiple levels, and I know families do, I know parents do, I know the municipalities do on budget time. And then just the increased numbers of students leaving the district to Aggie, Tri-County, BBT, school choice, et cetera. So there's benefits to remaining regionalized. You know, there's the existing and potential to grow and collaborating opportunities between the towns. There's one school committee. There's an integrated curriculum that we're always talking about here on instruction and professional development. Millville and Blackstone students entering the middle school and high school with access to a parallel, you know, academic offerings. Financial benefits are, you know, we do get regional transportation reimbursement, which is a pro and a con. There's one central office, there's cost savings that go along with that. And then there's the opportunity to grow and strengthen as neighbors with a common vision. The challenges of staying -- the challenges to deregionalizing, it's probably going to be more expensive for both towns in some way, shape, or form. With every rock you unturn, there's at least two more questions that come up. You know, it's possible less grant opportunities, loss of transportation aid, which again is a pro and a con, continued and final division between neighboring communities, less opportunities for students sometimes in terms of the programming that we want to put forth, division of asset supplies. One challenge would be there'd be two school committees. That's also a pro. I put in under benefits. The benefits are really each town has their fiscal autonomy and control. There can be some possible long-term savings for each town in terms of having control of the buses. Right now, we have to have a seat for every kid. If we were a town like Uxbridge or Franklin, you could control those, you could put the cost to families. There could be potential savings there. Clearly, opportunities for more enriched programming, each town, you know, developing their own programming. And there might be benefits having two school committees. I don't know. And clearly, less -- I don't know if less anxiety around budget process, but it'd be a simpler budget process. And I just gave you two pictures of what it could possibly look like, but -- and again, this is right off the top of my head. There's no if, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about, this has to be the exact. There are other possibilities of, you know, people can be explored about pulling a third town in that, you know, you can explore as well. But there's definitely pros and cons for each. You know, it's clearly, it clearly starts with a town putting an article on a warrant and then going from there. So you have all these documents, you have all the sources of the documents. Dennis in Yarmouth went through this process back in, I think it was '07 or '08, and they went through a complete process about how they would do it and then decided not to because it was just, the benefits really did not weigh the costs. And they were going through a similar issue where, I believe it was Yarmouth, that didn't really want to pay the full freight of the educational funding. So I threw it out there in August. I wanted to follow through and give you the information. Everyone's got it. You know, there's definitely pros and cons. I'm not totally in favor of it. I think it would be less of an experience if Millville had their, every grade in that school, I don't know if they could, they couldn't possibly do it. They could do elementary and middle school. There'd be ripple effects in Blackstone where if we had less buses and we had walkers, the town's going to have to clear those streets, the sidewalks, to plow. So there's ripple effects all over the place. But if the committee wanted to pursue that, they at least have a foundation there to look at and begin with. So what I would say is if you have questions, we can discuss it right now. We don't have to at all. But I would say someone make a copy of this and put it online in our packet up in there and go from there.
Or should we send it to the towns? Because you're saying it would start with them, anyway.
Someone would have to put an article on the A-town. I mean, they could get it if they wanted to pursue it. I mean, I don't know if the towns even want to pursue it.
Would they have to have a warrant just to pursue?
Yeah, they would have to warrant to start the process.
Okay.
And then form an exploratory committee to really dig down into the layers of it. You know, I mean, and layers, I gave you the stuff that Dennis did. You know, they really had to break up a central office, they had to break up, you know, and again, there are pros and cons to it, you know.
Have there been any towns that have successfully done it?
Not that I know of. They've explored it, but I think there's more occurrences of, I mean, clearly, the state wants you to regionalize, you know. I think they would put some hurdles in there if you had a plan in place, and they would make it kind of difficult. I think you see more if it's a two-town district adding a third. Trying to think, maybe four or five years ago, Mendon and Upton was exploring adding Hope Dale. They chose not to do it, and again, Hope Dale really pursued it, and Mendon Upton chose not to. You see other towns out in Western Mass that really can't function without being regional. You know, I mean, you see, I'm sorry.
There was also a push at the end of Deval Patrick's administration to look at condensing districts because Massachusetts has a huge number of small districts under 5,000 students. And so there was looking, they were looking at incentivizing, consolidating, expanding regions, as Bill said, as well as having towns look at if there were two districts of under five, and would there be a chance to consolidate? Part of the problem that sunk that was so many new schools had been built that towns were on the hook for so much money around the new buildings that there was, there was almost an impossibility to, if they wanted to, they wouldn't be able to consolidate because of that debt service.
The other ripple effect, you said that, I don't have my notes on here, but the other ripple effect that if Blackstone ever wanted to pursue this, they would have to figure out how the future payments for the high school roof would become all Blackstone, and Millville would be relieved of that debt at the point of deregionalizing. So those are the fiscal kind of minutia that you would have to go through to do that. So.
Okay. Any questions for Bill?
Great job, Bill. I know this is a lot of work. I know you've been hammering on this for a while. I'm glad we kind of finally presented it.
Yeah, I'm not, honestly, I'm not honestly for it.
Yeah, I know.
You know, I just think we have to kind of throw it out there. And ultimately, it comes down to what's best for students. And quite honestly, if I was a Millville parent, I wouldn't want, I mean, there's two different views of it. You know, maybe they would get, you know, a more solidified education in a smaller classroom and whatnot in the middle school, but they would have to go somewhere else for high school. You know, they'd have to school choice somewhere else. You know, I mean, there's a bunch of scenarios. You could pull in a third at the high school level, you know, but there are ripple effects of it. You know, we have a high school, we just put a roof on that has to be a school for 25 years, you know. So it's for future planning and, you know, I mean, the bottom line is we can't keep having budget seasons like we've had, that's all. And I'm not totally sure this one's going to be any different, you know. And quite honestly, the state has to do something different in terms of their funding, and the feds have to do something different in their funding. You know, the Supreme Court now wants to kind of expand the Americans with Disabilities Act, and I don't know what that ripple effect's going to be, but those are things that are going to be challenging in the coming years, and, you know, I don't know where money's going to come from. I mean, Douglas is dismantling education for the last three years. You know, they're at a point, you know, pot shops aren't going to pay for everything, I can tell you that. But we might have one.
Thank you very much, Bill. Any other subcommittee updates?
Just regional agreement. I asked Bridgette to check on the calendar. It looks like February 2nd is available, so we'll post a workshop unless there's any objections to doing so. It'll be the second time we get the group together to meet and, you know, open it to the public. We had eight members last time, so hopefully more will come.
February 2nd, you said, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock here at the middle school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vinoco. Mrs. Cobb is dealing with a very sick family this weekend, so she will not be here. She said she's free to answer any questions that I can't answer, so.
Would we just be able to have her come in on the 26th?
She will be here on the 26th. She will be presenting the draft, so she will be here on the 26th. In your packet is the expenditure report for the first half of the year, and also the revenue report. As you can see, the unencumbered balance of $178,493 is being carefully monitored. So many things impact that between now and April 1st. Our special ed costs are frozen as of April 1st. We have made it through the heaviest utility bills, so we are being very careful as we go through January revenue to April 1st in every school budget, not just ours. So we are hopeful that we can manage this down to the dollar. There will not be huge amounts at the end of the year. We will be fortunate, and we knew this going in, with a budget that was less than 1% increase to the general fund for this year. It was going to be a very tight year and a very difficult year with some hard choices to make with additional revenue sources that were pulled, one being the pre-K, the kindergarten grant that we, that was pulled at the very tail end of the cycle. So we are watching it closely. We are in okay shape. Obviously, you'd like to have a little bit more of a cushion to get through the next quarter, but it's doable. Like all school budgets, we are, you know, if an expensive student leaves the district, that frees up some money. If another expensive student arrives in the district, that will cost us, and we have to adjust accordingly. If we have something that breaks, and things are breaking a lot, and we'll get to that later in my report, that, in most cases, if it's health and safety or important to the operation of the buildings, we have to fix it. Where we can postpone and defer maintenance, we will continue to do so until we get to, hopefully, projects that will renovate, which are long overdue. So I think we're, we are okay. We're not in the ideal situation where we are in January, heading into third quarter, but it will just require watchful eyes each and every week.
Are there any areas you're particularly alarmed at right now?
No.
I know, and there's an ebb and flow to the year, I know.
Right now.
Anything right now?
We think we fixed everything that's going to break or has broken.
Famous last words.
Yeah. The next thing, to be very honest, is the elevator at the high school, which not only is just about 50 years old, 49 years old, but the parts are hard to find because the company that made the elevators long out of business. So we are, we are really keeping our fingers crossed that that will get us through until, hopefully, the renovations of that building commence. Again, we'll get to that. But that's the number-one thing that keeps me up at night because we have, we have to use it, and we also have to have it by law. So right now, the fix for that would be very expensive, so, but we would hope that we could wrap that replacement into a new renovation.
What about subs? I know we'd reduce that, and is that going to, you're going to, listen, if we can make it with this budget, that's great. You're saving about, you know, a bunch of money there.
Already negative.
But, well, negative, but not that much. When we budgeted a lot, the previous year, 370 grand, and now we only budgeted 123 this year.
We are, we are pretty light in our budget lines in a lot of areas, subs being one. And certainly, it's not the ideal situation. We knew this when we started the year.
Right, yeah.
That it was going to be a very challenging budget to manage. I think, you know, Bill, you said it best last spring. You know, every year, we start a million-plus short.
Yeah.
And that's really the structural deficit that this budget has for the last eight to 10 years. And so that is something that we'll have to handle as we move forward, but I think what's exacerbating the situation is that the state is not, does not have any revenue, and is forecasting a very challenging budget cycle for the state. And at the federal level, the grant, the federal grants are being reduced. And so it really, really is becoming a challenge, and I don't see much hope, certainly at the federal level. Public education was not even discussed for the 15 months of the campaign. And with our new proposed cabinet, the Secretary of Education is much more about choice and charter than shoring up the needs of the districts around insurance, health insurance, and special ed, which are the two drivers.
I do think that they're going to try to figure out a plan for the foundation budget review stuff, but there's no way it's going to help us this year. They're looking at a seven-year plan.
It won't be enough.
It won't be, yeah.
Take the other side.
So is there anywhere on here that we, minus the $178,493 that snow and ice comes into play? Or is it the $178,493?
Well, we do have small amounts, I believe, in the budget.
Is it encumbered?
Yeah, it's encumbered.
Okay.
But if we had a repeat of January, February of 15, we'd be out of luck. But hopefully, the weather pattern has been kind and hopefully continues to be kind.
So with the status of what we're looking at right here, where do our buildings stand for their needs, for their necessities that were budgeted for? They are encumbered?
They are encumbered.
And they are purchasing as needed?
Yes, yes.
Nobody is feeling any type?
This is how we started.
If it's, if it's budgeted and it is appropriately purchased, then absolutely we do it. Again, ideally, we've done most of our big purchases already. We had a late start because of the 1/12 budget scenario, but we have caught up. We do have everything that we need. The key will be to get through the next two months, three months, until we get to April. And I think, you know, that is going to be the challenge.
Now, what's the E and D? Can you clarify that on the third page?
On the revenue page?
Yeah.
On the back page there of revenue, that was the amount that was transferred.
$684?
No, the $350 that was applied to the budget.
Yeah, no, I know that. What about the bottom, what do we have? Is this what we have in excess?
No, no, the $684, I believe, is the total of the, all of that column.
Oh, that, that, okay. Sorry.
Yes. The $350 was the amount that was being applied from the E and D account for this year.
What's left there? Do we know?
I forget what, the number off the top of my head runs through me because I always tell it, don't say it if you don't know it.
It's like, it's 2.5%?
No, it's, well, it's very close to 600,000 in E and D now. But it's 2.5%.
We got to build that up.
Right.
We've eaten at it for years.
Certainly, if we're going, and again, as I segue into the building projects, while you are allowed 5%, that's, that's north of 1 million in E and D. That helps you, obviously, with capital, it helps you with your bond rating. It helps you with the borrowing.
Does anyone remember, I can't remember a time when we ever had 5% in E and D. Anyone? You guys have been here a while?
No. No. We have not had that.
Yeah. And to be, to be honest, the committee has been very forthright in liberally applying E and D funds anywhere from 300 to $600,000 per year to offset the budget. So that, you know, that's the town stabilization account. And that's our account that is, is, is not nearly where it should be to build forward. And, and so we continue to keep all of the, you know, all of those pieces of the puzzle close because, you know, if you had unexpected expenses that you needed to pay for, and that $178 unencumbered amount went to zero, then the only place to go is E and D. And, and again, that's your, that's your account that allows you to do a lot of other things, so.
If we had to do an elevator, like, let's just say it stopped working.
$65,000 to get it where it needs to be. And that's not in code. That's only to make it function. 65 was the price that we got.
That's repairing the current one.
But that would come out of the $178. We need to do that tomorrow, just for kicks and giggles. Would we have to access that out of the $178 that you have listed here?
Well, you would probably want to use the current general fund first.
Go negative.
And then, and then, but let the towns know that that's the capital impact that we're doing just to keep the building open. And so then, if that, you're down to, let's hypothetically say, $178 becomes $110, then you have a much shorter amount to get to zero, then you'd have to get to E and D. I wouldn't expect that you'd use E and D first. You hold on to that as long as you can, but it would get you that much closer to that zero, which is a challenge, you know? And towns face it on their own balance sheets, the state faces it on its balance sheet. That rainy day fund allows the state to borrow. rainy day fund allows the state to borrow at a reduced rate when they go out and bond their big projects. It's no different for the towns, you know, if the towns have the right, the proper amount in their stabilization, it allows them to, to borrow favorably and to be rated favorably, and for the regional districts as their own entity, financial entity, we need to have that same conservative financial approach. And I think that that has always been the challenge, at least over the last four or five years that, that I have looked at. So, you know, that's where we are, and that, obviously, the elevator is one of the, the key things that keeps me up. But, you know, right now, we're, we're okay, but there's gonna be a lot of pieces, as you'll see in my next part of my report, in all five of our schools, four for sure, that, that we need to address. So, cautiously, but hopefully watching it. Next item on my report is the School Resource Officer update, and thanks to the town of Blackstone for providing the funds to give us an SRO. We have tremendous cooperation in Millville from Chief Landry and Officer Shepherd, who do a wonderful, wonderful job of integrating the needs of, of MES whenever we need them. And for our four schools in Blackstone, Officer Joe Nimsick has started November twenty-eighth, and for the holiday weeks before the, the break, really acclimated and universal applause for his style, his availability, his follow-up, and really, as we're just getting started, it has been a win-win for everybody. And I think Chief Ross has given us great, great support, and it's really been a very, our public safety in both towns really works well with the district. This is just one more example. And, and as, as our, as, as our social fabric, as our societal fabric gets stretched, not just in our district, but across the Commonwealth, an SRO can provide tremendous linkage and support for individual students, for, for families, to make sure that they're in school, to make sure that they take away any of the major concerns that, that administrators have. It's really been a terrific program. So, that, that's one piece of the Mass laws that have been challenging for us to deal with that I think has been a win, that it requires, subject to appropriation, that we have, that districts have, SROs back in place.
Is it a three-year memorandum, my understanding, or is it a one-year that carries over?
Yeah, it, it's reviewed every year, but, but it's a three-year agreement, but it's reviewed with the superintendent and the chief every year.
Can you just talk about where his salary comes from? Some people may have that question.
Yeah, it's, as I said, the town of Blackstone provides the, the financing of that position, and...
So, that's not split seventy, thirty, that's a hundred percent Blackstone?
No, yeah, that's a one-hundred percent Blackstone. And, you know, Officer Nimsick and, and Officer Shepherd really do know, know the, the cooperative side of that, and it's worked out well. It's worked out really well, and our, our thanks to the town of Blackstone for that appropriation.
Thank you.
Mr. Cameron will be here, I'm hopeful momentarily, so I'll go on to my next report. Justin will be here to explain all of his revamped and revised field trips. Next is the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority. This is how we financed our roofs. School Building Authority was set up in, came into operation in two thousand and seven. Up until two thousand and four, Department of Ed managed with mixed success all of the building projects. So, in two thousand and four, there was a moratorium on school building and school renovations and, and improvements. School Building Authority is funded by one penny of the sales tax, and so, that varies from year to year. In January, they open up for statements of interest, and the first step on the statement of interest is for the boards of selectmen in municipal districts and in regional districts, the school committee, to vote to approve the submission of a statement of interest. This year, there's well over a hundred projects, two thousand and sixteen, that were submitted. Then, the School Building Authority will look at all of them. They also, every five years, contract with a consulting company to evaluate all eighteen-hundred and sixty-four schools in the Commonwealth, and they rank each building on a whole series of factors, from building systems to the curriculum components, the age, and work that has been done already. Each year, only seven or eight projects are funded, and it only takes a Waltham High School to soak up a lot of, you know, of that's available. It's a balancing act from the School Building Authority. Several towns in, in the suburbs have opted to just finance it themselves because there is such a weight, and still, schools that need to be addressed. They came in October to, to review all of the schools in our district, and that is now being processed by MSBA. So, there are several kinds of projects, there's green repair, there's an accelerator repair, there's a core renovation and new construction project. We have, outside of the middle school, four schools in, in need of renovation. Millville Elementary is the newest, and, and a lot of us think, oh, that was just recently, but it was nineteen ninety-two, and so, that's twenty-five years. In our own homes, we tend to replace things more than once every twenty-five years, and so, there are some components at Millville that need to be addressed. Certainly, the, the oil tank, the windows, and, and a few other key pieces of that building. However, we also have John F. Kennedy, which is now fifty-plus years old, and some pieces of Maloney, and most assuringly, the high school, which, nineteen sixty-nine. Unfortunately, I think I'm the only one here that remembers that year, but it's, it's now untouched, basically, for forty-eight years. And so, there is building systems that are fairly, and do need to be replaced and renovated. There is certainly a need to, the curriculum areas, especially the science labs. So, there is really three schools, three point, three, three schools plus, because part of Maloney has some pieces of the building systems that will need to be updated, heating and ventilation. So, I'm going to submit, with your approval tonight, three statement of interests. We are basically competing with ourselves, because if, if there's a hundred projects submitted, and we're submitting three of them, it's up to MSBA to then come out during the year and look at the buildings firsthand. I will be sending along the, the building studies that we did, that NSDEC produced for us. The next steps would be then, once we have this statement of interest submitted, SBA will come out and look at the buildings. Jack McCarthy, who is, is acquainted with Millville's town administrator, Mrs. Callahan, came out and looked at Millville. He also knows that we have other projects that we are going to submit, and it's weighed with the needs of other buildings, other communities, in terms of which ones get the top priority. The, the towns would then need to vote, so certainly, on the high school, both Millville and Blackstone would need to approve an engineering study, and then for Millville, the town of Millville would approve Millville Elementary Study, and then the town of Blackstone would approve John F. Kennedy's engineering study. These studies typically are six-figure studies, but they attach a very, very calculated dollar figure to the projects, so that that's, becomes the basis of the bidding if the project is approved. So, they tend to typically move forward after the summer, each year, twenty-five to thirty projects for consideration, and then, in the fall, leading up to now, is when they will look at the revenue that they have to, to work with, and then appropriate that to the, the projects that have been submitted. So, the, the first deadline for us is February, I believe it's seventeenth, and then April fourteenth, which is when our projects have to be submitted. So, the statements of interests must be in for the accelerator repairs by mid-February, by the core repair renovations by mid-April. Once MSBA has that, then they will begin their process. Parallel and simultaneously, the towns would then have to appropriate the, the funds for the engineering studies, which become the basis for the dollar amounts that would be then looked at by MSBA, and then weighed against all of the other projects, competing for a, a relatively small number of dollars. So, that seven or eight in most years is what is able to be funded. So, I would, I would certainly ask, and I, I attached the, the, the language that is given to us from MSBA, and it certainly just lets you know that the required vote, if a regional school district, the vote in the following form is required from the Regional School Committee only, resolved having convene, in an open meeting on January twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, in accordance with charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated when we submit it, for, one, Millville Elementary School, two, John F. Kennedy Elementary School, and parts of Maloney, and three, the Blackstone-Millville Regional High School, for which the application may be submitted to the MSBA. And then, we check off on the statement of interest form and a brief description of the deficiencies described therein. And hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from MSBA, or commits the city-town-regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So, once, if the committee does vote for each one of those, then we send along the original signature of the chair with the minutes of the meeting that the vote is taken, and along with the, the brief detail of the projects becomes our statement of interest, which is really just...
Three separate, three separate votes.
Three separate votes. And, and so, this is then submitted, and then the next step by April is to submit the actual plan?
No, no, the, the different projects have two different dates. So, the accelerator repair projects, of which typically are windows and boilers and furnaces, is the accelerator repair, those must be in by February. The core renovation, which would be really the high school, would be in for April. And the, the number of districts, the number of projects that the Building Authority could approve would be all or none, or one or two, it doesn't really, we don't know that until then.
At what point is the, is the town on the hook for the planning, the six-figure planning phase?
The town, we would be working with MSBA once the statement of interests are in to come up with the, the next steps for the language for the towns to vote at their annual town meetings, to appropriate the funding for the engineering studies.
So, at that point?
If it gets approved?
That's, okay.
No, no, that, that is money that needs to be spent to get us to the next step.
Correct.
You said it was six figures for each?
Well, it could be. Now, the last time I think I, I did this in Oxford, the engineering study was, was over fifty thousand just for a small renovation.
Right, no, I, I get that.
So, that money is money that, that has to be spent regardless of if MSBA will approve.
Will approve it or not.
Right. That's only the next steps.
So, that's going to, to the town meetings in May?
Yes, yes.
And the towns are aware that that's coming?
Yes, both towns are.
And, and is that, I think I know the answer to this, but is that reimbursable if we get approved? If we, if we then get approved, can that, that, that money get thrown into the percentage?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't recall, I don't recall the answer. I thought that when we did it a while back, that it, it did get rolled into the, the project, but I...
Or just taken off the top?
Yeah, but I'm not, I'd, I'd have to check that.
We had to put money forward, but I remember the discussion around it, that it would be reimbursed.
We did, or the towns did?
Well, the towns would...
The school committee had to, but it was, it was definitely a roof, it wasn't...
Yeah, it was, it was to get the specs and whatnot for the plans. So, what they're saying is, if I understand this correctly, once we submit, we have to get, no better word, an engineering feasibility study of the details of this, what's this gonna take?
The scope, the sequence, attaching dollar values to all of the work needed.
Right, and it could be between fifteen and a hundred grand.
Yes.
And, and...
And that becomes the basis for the bidding, if we get the project.
And then, and then, and then, Millville becomes responsible for MES, Blackstone becomes responsible for JFK, and then, the high school is the seventy, thirty?
Yes.
And, 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 and Millville's aware of this?
Yeah, both, both towns are, both finance committees are, both town boards are.
And they brought the, they came to you?
Right. I mean, the benefit is...
They're aware of our high school.
Oh, yes.
They know this number, this dollar amount, or they just know that it's a project?
The benefit is if it goes through this process and spend a little upfront, then there's gonna be up to a sixty percent reimbursement.
Yeah, I get that, I'm just wondering if, if, if the idea is that these three go in with a hundred, are we better, I don't know?
Picking one?
Yeah.
Well, it's, I asked that question, we are certainly better served to put all of them in.
Okay.
Because MSBA would then do the crunching of the amount of dollars they have, the number of projects that they could fund, and which ones are the most pressing. So, I guess you could say, well, let's have the luxury of putting in one a year, and if do it that way, MSBA has told me that your best, your best bet is to put the statement of interest in for all of them.
When's the last time, does anyone know that we've ever done anything like this non-roof, ever?
All, the, all that I could find out was in two thousand and nine, there was a committee formed to look at the renovation of the high school, but it, it didn't really...
Did we pay anything for a study?
No, I think it was really, it was really initial conversations, and then it was summarily dropped, because I think of the, the time of, that we were in that recession, the depression of '08.
So, if the studies are done, and it's not approved, in other words, it's not one of the hundred that comes through, those studies would essentially hold for submitting the next year?
Yeah, typically, and then to, to update them for the next submittal is relatively small dollars.
Right, right.
Not that, not that contractors and, and builders will want to beholden to an eighteen-month-old estimate, but you can certainly get those adjusted if there was subsequent submissions, submittals. It is a, a fairly straightforward process once you're in it, but it's, it's really, it's really important to know that we shouldn't wait any longer on, on any of these. Millville, Millville Elementary, the oil tank is of grave concern, the, the fitting and the piping that comes out of that, that's important. You know, certainly, at, at JFK, that's the oldest building in the district, and that was the first new school built in over a hundred years, when it was, was built in, in nineteen sixty-six.
Is the reason why you don't have HVAC on there, because it then would not be an accelerator repair? Because we need an HVAC at JFK.
Right, you, there, there are ways to engineer air quality and airflow that don't require full HVAC, you can do that with a variety, there's a lot of technology now around the engineering of getting air quality and, and air comfort without full-blown air conditioning. But I think that AC on its own would not be a part of the accelerator. But I think that AC on its own would not be a part of the accelerated repair.
My concern is in submitting this for a town in May, in submitting this to the town, particularly the town of Millville, submitting the Millville school and the high school and any budget increase to a strapped town that doesn't have a town hall, I just foresee our school budget getting lost in the process.
It's a very real concern. Now, the timing of this, however, there is a bit of a lead time to this. So the earliest, let's say that we submit everything, we do all of the due diligence, school building authority comes out and says, next December, January, you know what, we're gonna do Millville Elementary and John F. Kennedy. We're gonna approve that. Then the towns have options. Do they wanna do the financing of the high school on their own? Probably not, but that's an option. Or do you submit the high school again in the very next year? But hypothetically, if it's approved in first quarter of two thousand eighteen, so a year from now, whatever's approved is approved, then the towns at these annual town meeting would take two votes to approve the project. One to say, yes, we're gonna do it, and two to fund it. Then it goes out to bid. So the work probably doesn't start until, at the earliest, fall of two thousand eighteen or spring of two thousand nineteen.
Doesn't solve the problem of having money to do that.
But no, but you don't, but then you don't have to bond it until two thousand eighteen, two thousand one.
Oh, I see, oh, I see.
But I'm, my concern isn't for the bond for the project, my concern is for the engineering costs.
Engineering costs, right. That is a piece of this that seems to be risky, but it really isn't. Because how do you know what you're dealing with until you have a dollar figure?
Until you do it, right.
And so you really do need that detailed engineering study of the scope, the sequence, and attaching costs to every piece of these projects to even be able to move forward. So that becomes, you know, a very important part of the sequence.
Which is good in general, and that fits into a lot of other projects. Say went to deregionalize, okay, now Millville knows what it's taking on, Blackstone knows what it's taking. So those numbers are useful numbers, you can use going forward.
Well, but the other thing that I'm thinking in my head is, if they don't do it, and the oil tank goes-
I was just thinking the same.
They have to find that money because there's not gonna be able to be a school there.
Right.
And the other thing is, when you have windows and stuff on here, didn't they just get a green grant? Did any of that go to windows? I thought, I don't know.
I don't believe so, because I couldn't find any record of that, so that becomes-
He came, I mean, he's been here.
No, I know, but I don't think there was, that was funding that actually went to replacing windows.
Oh, all right.
Oh, I have some history there. Thank you for coming, Dr. Hawley.
Thank you for asking the question and having me. In terms of the green grant question that you raised, it was designed to basically improve the insulation, so the seals for the doors and windows and trim, so they were sealing and compound that had been used around windows and doors. And to be quite honest, it's really taken the building and turned it into an oven. So what's happened is the airflow now, we shut the blowers off, we don't even run them, and the building's plenty warm. Upstairs is very much so warm, so there is a phase two. So we did that last October with Mr. Reposa of the Selectmen, Mr. Langto, myself, and Mr. Reposa, the superintendent, we walked the entire facility last year, and on Columbus Day weekend, the first phase of the green grant was implemented, and they basically insulated the building top to bottom. It is now really well insulated and well cared for in terms of the first phase of the green grant. They just came back this past month and did the second phase. Mr. Reposa came back, we, Mr. Langto, myself and others, an entire team of people came through and talked about what could and could not be done, as it related to the oil pipe, alternatives to the oil pipe, could we go to propane or use an alternate source, what would be covered, if it would be covered? And they kinda gave us different scenarios and options.
What is phase two, though, Paul? What can be done in the phase two?
So looking at alternate energy instead of an oil, where we know we have a problem with the pipe and the tank, if that is something we, the town of Millville would wanna look at. It's their building, so they really have to kinda weigh in on where they wanna go.
And would the phase two pay for it in entirety, the change of propane, or is there-
What it would be is a phased, a strategic plan over the course of three to five years. They'd probably take one, the way it was explained to us, and I'll do the best I can, I wish I was engineering savvy as some of the gentlemen we were speaking with that day that are part of this program. But what they were trying to explain is they would probably take one of the oil burners down, run an alternate, two smaller burners, and get the propane set up if they were to go that route, if the town decided to go that route. If not, then we needed to look at, you know, over the course of three to five years, what that would look like and how we could structure it so that the project was done.
With no cost, this phase two would cover that?
It should, it should be covered.
Okay.
Yeah, and it would be in partnership with the community. So because at the time, Dr. Davis signed off on those documents to allow Blackstone and Millville to be a green grant community on both sides of the district. Before Dr. Davis left, that was huge, because it opened up opportunities for not only Blackstone but Millville. And Millville's really been aggressive in caring for the building and doing due diligence with it. I can't speak as much for Blackstone, I'm not there, so I can't speak to what's happening in the day-to-day on that end. But I know for us, it's been very, very important, and the expectation is that savings and efficiencies would be realized throughout the winter because we're not expending so much oil right now and so much, you know, expense that way. So it's hoped that over the course of this-
It's a good plan, sounds like a good plan.
And these guys have been very thoughtful, they're gonna, they're gonna give over the proposals to the town for them to consider and look at how they wanna move forward. If they decide to switch their energy source, that's a big deal. But it is a strategic rollout, it's not gonna be able to be done all in one year, and it can't be done in one season, for instance. It's gonna take time, so they would probably, there's two big units, one would be taken down, replaced by two small units and run, and then the next year, the other unit would be taken down, or two years later, they take the other big unit down that runs the oil and set up two propane, smaller tanks to run the propane, if the town decided to go that way. It's a nice option to have, as Mr. Himmelberger mentioned earlier, because he's been with us throughout this, we did have the executive director of the MSBA with us recently. The bottom line is, we have to do something with regard to that oil pipe. It keeps not only him up, but Mr. Langto and myself up at all hours, day and night. So to be quite frank with you, we lose the oil pipe, we lose the building, we cannot heat the facility. And if we can, it's gonna be because they run a truck and line into the building, and that's-
You don't need it, you just said there's seals on there, and yet it's warm as it was before, or whatever.
Yeah. No, kidding, no kidding. Yeah, you know, the end game, to be quite frank, is not pleasant. To lose, to lose this pipe is a big deal. So we're trying to be proactive and get ahead of it, in concert with MSBA and the green grant initiatives and the other programs that are available to us. And Mr. Langto has really been instrumental in that, I have to give him full credit in terms of him staying with, not only myself, but Mr. Himmelberger on the facilities and the plant itself and what's going on.
Can I ask two more, I have two more questions. Is, would it be helpful to, I don't know what the pattern has been in terms of what we've been spending to Band-Aid these things for the past eight years, you know, to fix this or fix that? I know for the roofs, we Band-Aided those things for thirty years until we hadn't, we couldn't Band-Aid it anymore. Would it be helpful to have those maintenance expenditures that we're spending every year as a result of not doing these things, to see what they're already spending? I don't know if we'd do four or eight years or whatever it is, but clearly they've, they've tried to fix this oil tank many times, you know, and, or whatever, or windows or whatnot, you know. It would be helpful to see what those numbers were, what they're already spending, that they have to spend, versus the fifty thousand dollars they have to come up with-
For the engineering study.
When over, over three years, if they're spending fifty thousand dollars on repairs, it makes sense to spend the fifty and move forward.
Yep, I can get that information.
So right now, you're looking for three separate motions?
Three separate votes to submit a statement of interest for those three projects, as I read, and I can certainly read it for each one, but I think if, whatever the committee's pleasure.
For the high school building system, would that include elevator? Should it be separately listed here?
Yes, no, that, yeah, that's gonna be a part of it, yes. Yes.
And science labs?
And science labs.
When does MSBA make the final decision?
This is really just notes on the margin so that the committee knew that that's gonna be a core repair project, but it's going to include-
When do they announce their selections, their decisions?
Probably January, February of two thousand eighteen.
So a year from now?
Yes.
Is it all or nothing? Would, say you have an eight million dollar project, would they say, okay, we'll give you six? Or is it all?
Typically, once they, once they do their research on the project, and they say, you know what, you do need everything, it's everything, rarely do they split it. Rarely do they split it, or, because you need it. I mean, usually it's integrated so that you have to do it all at the same time, or at least get the vote, you know, whether you phase it in over two summers or a couple of years.
The figure's the figure.
Right.
It's like the roofs.
And you actually-
Just don't overcomplicate it, you know, multi-step thing, because that can be brutally good for the project.
Because the roofs, I think for the roofs, didn't we like get approval for it, and then, we didn't have to bond that thing up for like eighteen months, right?
Yeah, almost two years.
Yeah.
Before you bond it, you have to really get to the end of it, dude, before you bond it, once you get through the State House notes and the financing of the project. So it wouldn't hit the towns borrowing in capital expenditures probably till two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one, once they bonded, if a project that we submit in the spring of seventeen is approved in the spring of eighteen, and then goes through all of the proper requirements. And once it's completed, if it was completed in the end of nineteen, it wouldn't get bonded until two thousand twenty.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion for Millville Elementary on an accelerated repair program.
Yes. One for John F.
As written.
Yep, well, it's-
So we'll do them one at a time?
Yep.
Motion for Millville?
So moved?
Moved as written by Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any, second by Tara, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say unanimous, and you'll get the two me, two sign.
Yes.
And a motion for JFK AFM for the accelerated repair as written.
Oh, moved.
Motion made by Wendy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Georgia. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say unanimous. And a motion for BMR as written.
For a core repair project.
So moved.
A motion made by Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I will keep you posted as we go through the process, and it'll be, it'll be some work, but the right kind of doing for all three. Next, as part of my report, we are fortunate to have Mr. Cameron here to explain where he is going, or would like approval to go.
He is going.
So welcome, welcome, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you. So if you recall, I was here either late August or early September to get your blessing and your official approval on what was then the Nature's Classroom field trip, the overnight, and the Washington DC field trip as well. Do you want some background to what happened in Nature's Classroom as far as why we're looking to transition?
Not really.
Okay.
I don't know, I'll speak for myself.
You made the right decision.
You made the right choice.
I'm thinking, we're not talking to ourselves, I think, outside, yeah.
Okay.
Great counsel from the superintendent.
So I'll give you the Wikipedia version, forty-five second version. So approximately a week before, we were scheduled to go as a sixth grade, we got word, it was in the press, that they had bedbugs at Nature's Classroom. You know, a very serious claim that was found to be true and confirmed by Nature's Classroom. I think it did come out that another school had brought it there, and they were doing their due diligence to, you know, kinda sweep the grounds, sweep the sleeping quarters and such. Many of the area principals in the surrounding towns were actually scheduled to go right around us. The big difference between our school, who was ready to go, and all of the other schools that surrounded us, is Nature's Classroom didn't have any of our money, and I do that purposely. I also make sure that all the children make out the checks to Hartnett Middle School and not to the organization that we're going. It's a lot of paperwork on our part, you know, a lot of keeping track, a lot of schools don't want anything to do with the money, but I gotta tell you, in times like this, or in Washington DC, in act of God, or unfortunately terrorism, you wanna make sure you're in control as much as possible. So, you know, just having known these things, that anything can happen, no money was sent. Some of the surrounding principals were in a difficult spot, Nature's Classroom put them in a very difficult spot. They pretty much said, you need to go, or you're not being refunded the money. There was one school, Bellingham, who went but didn't stay overnight. So if you can believe it, they went for the day, they turned around, they came home to sleep, they went back, they turned around, they came home to sleep, they went back, because I think their trip was two nights, three days. The executive director pretty much put our school in a position of, if you do not come, you're not welcome to come back to that campus or any of the surrounding Nature classrooms.
Ever?
Ever, ever, according to him.
And have a nice day.
Well, you know, I very kindly shared with him that, you know, that type of approach is just, you know, harmful to our students and to our community. You know, anyways, that's a long story short to why we're looking at, and we did some due diligence and our homework and site visits to the campus, the University of Rhode Island campus, Alton Jones, you know, Dave, I believe, is familiar with the campus and the program. It's very reputable, has no affiliation with Nature's Classroom. Again, my sixth grade teachers conducted a site visit, I was there. You know, the only thing that is of a difference in contrast to Nature's Classroom campus is the size. It is not able to accommodate our entire grade. So the big contrast between this proposed trip and the proposed trip to Nature's Classroom and what we have done in the last few years, is we're looking to bring down one team, have that team spend an overnight, the other team then joins that team, and we're together as a grade for an entire day, doing bonding things as a day. Then the team that first went down leaves, and the second team then stays over the Thursday to Friday. Because their campus is big enough to host the size of our current sixth grade, but their sleeping quarters are not. Beautiful, beautiful facility. I felt it was very important in kinda doing my homework, in keeping a trip in the same radius for the sixth grade families of this year. So this campus, as you probably know, is just about forty, forty-five minutes away, which is what Charlton was for the Nature's Classroom trip as well. The cost is pretty much the same as well, I felt that was important. We were very fortunate that Alton Jones had the May dates available. It is after MCAS, which we find important as well, but we're hoping for a good experience, especially with the weather, because this is something that we're looking to, you know, have a part of the tradition here at the middle school.
Any questions for Mr. Cameron about Alton Jones? I think it's great that you found something comparable, and-
Can we just talk in general? I know a couple of trips, you said you have scholarship money. What's the source of that money?
I know, it's probably fundraised, but- Yeah, fundraising.
I wanna give them their moment in the sun.
Yeah, PTO is a big part of that, there's some fundraising, you know, this next seventh and eighth grade dance, I've just asked Stu Go if I could just- I've just asked Stu Go if I could just, you know, kinda take the leadership on it, and all of that money will go to scholarship as well. Although that one's gonna go to DC, but that's an example of scholarship. Each organization that I negotiate with, I make sure that a portion of the money that we bring in is put aside for scholarship as well.
Any other questions? So are we voting on these tonight, or each grade separately?
We already did Washington.
Yeah, already did Washington.
And the seventh grade one was, is already passed too, so.
Yeah, that, that one we already had. The eighth grade day trip to New York City is the second one that has not been presented to this committee, and that I wanted to just speak to very, very briefly. So this was a trip that we did two years ago. We, it was the eighth grade chorus at that time who did the performance at Empire State Building, but the seventh grade then went. I'm quite sure why. This year, we're looking at the eighth grade chorus again doing the performance, and those eighth graders who want to come and be a part of it. It's during February vacation, so I think it really allows families to opt out a lot easier, because it's not like they'll just be at school, you know, not doing fun things while their friends are off in New York City.
Is that set up with a tour company, or is that?
It is, it is not.
Chaperone run?
Yep, and the one that we went on a couple of years ago was not as well. And that's just to help keep costs down.
Just, what kind of numbers are there? Like, how many kids are in eighth grade altogether? How many are in eighth grade chorus?
Eighth grade chorus is, I believe, nineteen. The eighth grade class is, I wanna say one forty-three. I don't know if that's exact. The Music Association is paying for the first bus. So, you know, it'll be interesting to see if enough students sign up. If we spill over to other buses, that sixty dollars is, you know, not gonna increase. If for some reason we have interest only up to that first bus, then some of that money actually might go back into the pockets of the students who are going. So I wanna give credit to the Music Association for supporting us on that day trip.
All right, any other questions? So we're looking for a motion for eighth grade New York City day trip and the sixth grade Alton Jones Environmental Center at URI. The date's listed in May. Do you wanna do them together or separate?
Yes.
Together? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve both field trips as requested.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Jane, second by Wendy. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you unanimous?
Thank you for that support. If I could just quickly add that, whenever we have these trips, I always have entrusted parents who wanna be a part of the trips. We never have to have the parents because of the teachers and the staff here at the middle school, who always volunteer themselves to be a part of these trips. You know, the Alton Jones trip, Nature's Classroom in the past, and especially the DC, believe it or not, I even have to turn some staff down in this building for the DC trip. This is a very special building, and that is reflected upon, you know, the energy that the staff have to go with the kids. So I wanted to make sure that I shared that publicly as well.
So you'll have staff even for the February date?
You know, I, yeah, I don't know about that one yet.
And parents.
You know, that one I might have, I might open up to parents who might wanna accompany, you know, because it is during vacation. But DC last year was during vacation too, and again, I've just got a really special bunch here.
Yeah, you do.
And I think the kids look forward to the time with those chaperones. You know, they don't always want mom and dad. It, it's always a very positive, you know, positive feedback when they come back, so we, we definitely appreciate all the thought you put into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Only a couple of more items.
We're, we're over my time limit, but we can keep moving.
I will speak faster. Next is the vote to approve a records access officer. This is because of the new law that went into effect officially January first around the public records law. And this law is amended to chapter one twenty-one of the Acts of two thousand sixteen that allows the public to request public records. There is a limit to what records can be produced, there's a limit to what information can be, but we've already had two requests from quasi-national groups for information. And where it is public, we are, by, by law and by statute required to give it. Each town and regional district, each municipal, each financial entity must have a chief records officer. The name is posted on the entity's website with office phone number and email, and for anyone to request public records. So in the large majority of school districts, it is the superintendent. And we just need the committee to, to vote for that person responsible for responding to public records requests.
So your name will be listed with your, a link, your email address?
It will be put up in the website and, in accordance with the statute. And then I, I coordinate all the responses, I assist individuals who are seeking records, I assist the custodian of the records to preserve them in accordance with the law, prepare, posting online and periodically updating the guidelines to enable public to make informed public records requests, and documenting all of the requests and the responses, which is chapter sixty-six, section six A, with specific information about each request. So we will then maintain electronically and hard copy all of the requests, what was requested, and what was responded to. So I would simply ask the committee, unfortunately, to nominate me and recommend me as the public records officer.
So a motion to approve Alan Himmelberger Superintendent of Schools as record access officer for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District.
So moved.
Motion made by Wendy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you unanimous?
Thank you. The last item on my report is the approval of the Unit B contract. Unit B is our assistant principals in the district.
For us to sign tonight, or are we just? Is there one that has been signed already?
No, we have to.
Okay.
So because this typically follows Unit A, our Unit B members, who are too active, who are covered by this contract, we sat down and really just mirrored the Unit A language and, and economics.
So it just did.
It's carbon copy.
Something that changed other than the changes that were.
And, and the date. So this now becomes the successor agreement. Sixteen through nineteen.
So this mirrors the date of the new Unit A too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Everything mirrors it. So I would simply ask the committee to approve it, and then we have that one done. And we begin a Unit C negotiations Wednesday.
Absorb this for two weeks, or do you want to vote on it tonight?
There is no hurry, so certainly if the committee wanted to reveal it and respond it, yes.
I, I would prefer to see an old copy and compare it, I just, let's just.
That's fine.
See what was there.
So if you could include for everyone in our packets at the next meeting, this current.
With the comparison, yeah.
Before the meeting.
That's fine.
Before the meeting.
Yeah, we just said in electronic, there was four meetings, so we can look at it and come back.
Yep.
Just send us the old one, and so I can do my yellow highlights like that.
Yep.
Okay, Jane. Thank you, Jane.
And that, I believe, is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. And moving on to the report of the assistant superintendent.
Yeah, just gonna really quickly give you a quick update on the Chromebook rollout. As you remember, that did start right after the holiday break on January third and fourth. There's a total of a hundred and eleven freshmen, a hundred and twenty-one sophomores. Eighty-five percent of freshmen and seventy-three percent of the sophomores took Chromebooks. Eight percent of the freshmen and ten percent of the sophomores took the option of bringing their own device. And we do have some people we're tracking down because they have, we have two choices, A or B, and they have not responded. So we're, we have seven percent, or eight freshmen, we are in the process of contacting parents there. And twenty-one sophomores, about sixteen percent. Unfortunately, without those devices, and no, they cannot use their phones for, for this, they will fall quickly behind in class. So we are working with families if there are difficulties. But I just wanted to update the committee on that. You might have heard, we do have out of the, you know, two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty some odd Chromebooks, we have about thirteen where trackpads are not working consistently. Mr. Bozon is working with the, the vendor to rectify that. They're going through a few tests of software and that sort of thing. In the meantime, those thirteen students are borrowing our loaner Chromebooks out of the library during the day, and we hope to have that wrapped up within the next week or so.
Do we have some that are specially designed for students with disability? I mean, we have, or everybody got the same thing?
Uh, they do get the same thing. You can customize them to a certain extent to make them more accessible. And those are pretty standard. That's the update.
Any feedback yet from any students?
I, I asked a couple of kids, they're like, oh yeah, I love it. You know, we, and we did buy that software, that Go Guardian software that, you know, tracks, you know, if the kids lose it or if it's stolen, we can find them, how they're using it. And again, they are going back through the filters and, and limits that we have in school. So it's, these devices are actually safer than the parents' computers at home that they are accessing, or their cellphones. But it's really interesting to look, cuz, you know, you, you get a report as to the usage and where people are going. And about sixty-six percent of the students are accessing Google Classroom on a regular basis, you know, and Google Docs, and I, I do, and there was one kid who was going to a card gaming site and that was blocked. But I actually found it was really kinda cool, cuz you can play pitch on that site, and I love to play pitch. So I learned something through that. So it's, it really, it is, it is doing, it is doing its job, and it's giving us some good feedback. And the, the amount of usage already in his infantile state is, is very encouraging.
Do you know the percentage of people that took the insurance?
I do not, I did not ask that question. We could ask that question.
It, it could mean, well, I took the insurance, you know, cuz I didn't wanna end up paying two hundred bucks. But it could mean, you know, down the road, if there's a high percentage of people without insurance, that's, that, you have to, you have to be chasing people to pay, pay the.
Right, and that is something we wanna look at, but we need to, we need to solve the twenty-nine, and this was, this was yesterday, the twenty-nine students who are not participating. And getting that straightened out, but that'll be, that'll be the next thing as we plan to go forward. And so we did, in just a little budget preview, cuz we do need to continue doing this again. We need computers to have, you know, students be able to test with, they're going to go off to college, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We've already had those conversations. But it came up in our discussions with Mr. Bozon, Mr. Dudek, and Mr. Ducharme, that the sophomores next year as juniors will be in AP classes and classes with seniors who don't have Chromebooks. So we kind of have adjusted our sales to look at adding in those students to be seniors of current junior class and freshmen next year, as opposed, cuz originally it was nine and eight.
Right.
Although we'd love to do everybody, but being a little conservative with that, so.
So we do nine and twelve next year?
Yeah, do nine, nine and twelve next year.
At least then we'll be able to have one building.
Yes.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, can you just talk about, how is the broadband holding up with all this increased usage? The reason I ask is, we've been buying Chromebooks in the building I'm in right now, and it's the horror show.
Yeah.
And, and we're scared to death about the spring testing.
Yeah, the, well, I mean, the, well, I mean, the simple solution to that is to close down, which we can do.
Yeah.
We can shut off, tell everybody, hey, no, cuz a lot of it is the video streaming. So you could turn off the video streaming during the testing windows and just make sure people know they can't use that. But we have actually upped the access at, the bandwidth at the high school.
And that seems to be sufficient? That's, that's working.
Yeah, we get, well, we, we built the infrastructure to handle it.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's how much information's coming in and out of the main pipe.
Yeah.
So we've increased, I think, to three hundred, three hundred?
I think so.
I think so, from a hundred, hundred, or a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty. And that has solved the problem. But again, we only have half the school really using it. And juniors and seniors can, we didn't even, can bring their own device, so that does not even include those folks as well. And ultimately, you know, if your, next year, if your child is going to be a senior and is going to be going off to college, you're going to need a computer anyways, so it might be one of those things the families decide to do a year early and have them use it at, at the high school.
It's good to hear that the broadband's holding up well.
Yeah, but, but we did have, we did have to increase it, we probably will again.
Do it again next year.
Right, and that, and that does, you know, I mean, that is added increased cost.
And is that, that's eratable, right? We'll get sixty percent back on that?
Yes.
But we have to pay upfront?
We have to pay upfront, but we get, well, it's fifty percent, but yeah. Right now.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Thompson.
You're welcome.
And moving on to our last public forum and school committee forum.
I don't have anything.
Couple of things. I was trying to place where and when this happened, but I don't know when Jean shared it, and I think when she first came in, she rolled out some plans where she was gonna kinda revamp the, the whole serving stations and all that at the high school cafeteria. Anyone else remember that? When she came out and said, oh, you know, this, the old tray and the tubular thing, that's, that's a thing of the past. It'll be more of a food court type of a setup. And any progress on that? I can't even remember when this was. This is like, could've been a year ago, could've been four years ago. I honestly don't remember.
I don't know if I recall it since I've been here, but certainly we can revisit the conversation.
I just see if she has plans.
Yep.
That's in the. And actually, this is just sort of spitballing, I was thinking, a hundred and eighty degrees opposite from Bill's work, which is great. From time to time, I think, and I talked with various people about it, rather than deregionalizing, sometimes I think about a super region and think of the benefits of that, say, from the Rhode Island border up to the Massachusetts.
Like a sub-county?
Yeah.
And they do counties in the south?
Well, because I'm thinking, we're gonna go into UDC negotiations real soon.
Wednesday.
That town, they're probably doing the same thing, that doing the same thing. You know, health, health insurance, we'd have a much bigger bite, cuz we'd have much more numbers. Because truly, how different are we than our neighbors, when you come right down to it? And everyone thinks they're unique and they're the best, and, but truly, how unique are we? But the problem with that is you'd have to put, you know, ten or twelve superintendents a room and say, one of you guys are gonna come out for the job, and the other eleven won't. Similar thing with here. Maybe one of us from this table would move forward, and you're probably the super region. But I, I think that's, you know, that's different from Bill's plan completely, but that's got a whole nother set of possibilities.
But every, everybody's protecting their own crumbs.
Of course.
Are you suggesting a new subcommittee, Steve?
If I had more, more longevity, potentially, but I was just throwing it out there, but anyway.
It's done in the south, where they have the county.
They do their schools by counties.
Yeah. That's all.
Thank you. Tara?
Um, I would just like to ask, the school calendar is on like the district website. Does each school do their own updating, all like this, special, special activities? I just, they're not always all updated, so it'd be nice if everyone would.
Yeah, just a, a real quick answer to Tara's question is that we are, we know we need to address with the vendor
Okay.
the, the issues, which are many, around the, the website. So we are in process of talking with the vendor to get a website that works.
Who is our vendor?
It's eSchool.
ESchool.
So overall, the whole website?
Yeah, redesign, making it the way it should be.
Yeah, and training people how to use it.
Usable.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, a lot of, a lot of things are on that calendar. Yeah, 'cause I see, I mean, a lot of things are on that calendar, but then there's some schools that, there's certain things that just aren't, or, and like even just the school committee meetings, I'd ask Bridgette if she could start making sure that, once they're posted, that they actually make it to the calendar too.
To the district calendar?
Yeah.
I'll have an animation back for you.
That's it for me.
Wendy?
I just have a question, did the transportation bid come back yet, or is it closed? Is the transportation bid closed?
Yes, the transportation bid, fifteen companies received it, one was returned. Bid closed, I believe, Tuesday, and so we are in the process of analyzing that bid.
Where does that...
Telstone was the only, the incumbent was the only bidder, which around the state is a cause for concern, which follows the regional or the superregional, if not procurement, governing around transportation, because every, every entity seems to only get one bid back. And so that, the economies of scale, certainly of multiple districts combining, so the state may step in and look at regional bidding on buses.
Did the, did the transportation company that we hired out, did they change the, anything with the routes or anything, or are we, is that, is the bid still with the old routes?
I think the bid is with the current, the current routes, which we did adjust a bus down, and so that's an ongoing, that's part of, you know, year to year to year. I think, you know, we're in the process now of looking at the one bid to make sure that we, we get it where it needs to be.
So did they use that program that...
The Versatrans? Yeah, yeah.
So I am.
So I would expect that when Mrs. Cobb is here on the 26th in two weeks, we'll have a complete update as to where we are.
We should have a copy of the bid in our packet, and then...
Yes. Yes, yes.
Georgette?
Well, so.
Bill?
I'm good, thank you.
And I'm good as well. Okay, so upcoming meetings, January 26th, we've already spoke of many items that will be on that upcoming agenda, of course, if there are any others, please send them.
Is the superintendent mid-year update on that? I think that's on the timeline list.
Mid-year update.
Can I add one more thing to the agenda, if you could? I can't remember exactly what it was, but what our policy is on kids who have outstanding lunch balances. Are we, are we giving cheese sandwiches? I hope we're not. I'm not sure what the, what, there was a policy, if we recovered one here?
A while back.
So what is it?
It was a while back that we were doing cheese sandwiches, I don't know if it's still happening.
Is that, can I, can we just, can I ask this to see if, what, and poll the schools?
Yeah.
Because the, I think that's a crappy policy, just personally, you know, it's not the kid's fault that the parent didn't pay a bill, and, and I also wanna compare it to, maybe Jane Sheridan can come, I also wanna know that if, if we're throwing out food, if there's food left over, you know?
So maybe we need to see...
We're throwing out food?
We haven't seen it in a while.
Cheese sandwiches, it doesn't make sense to me.
'Cause Steve had a question.
I think, I think they are only allowed, and I could be wrong on this, but I think they're only allowed a specific hot lunch, like they don't get to get their, like, five different ice creams.
But it is a hot lunch.
I, I believe so, but I, I mean...
I don't know.
We just checked that.
I believe they have cheese sandwiches available, but I don't know.
Right.
I was gonna say, I don't know if it's a hot lunch. No, I understand no one's going hungry, but if we're throwing out ten hot lunches and a kid's getting an alternate lunch, there's something wrong there.
I don't believe that's happening, but let me follow up, and maybe we can bring Jane.
The only reason I bring it up, I don't think it's, it's happening in where I am, and it's, it's...
I think this answers Steve's questions too, so we should have her on an upcoming.
Maybe it's not the 22nd.
Okay. And we will be, I will be looking for a motion to move into executive session for reasons of discussing Unit C negotiations and not returning to public session.
So moved.
Motion made by Wendy, is there a second? Second by Jane, all those in favor, say aye.
I think we have to roll call.
Roll call, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Erin, yes?
Yes.